I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education Meeting for November 18th, 2014. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Shuler?
Here.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Mr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you and good evening. The first item on the agenda is the President's Report. There is no President's Report this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I have some very good news to report from Deerpath. Each year, the American Choral Directors Association selects a national choir. Only 10 percent of students that audition are accepted, and they have the opportunity to travel to Salt Lake City from February 25th to the 28th. I assume that's a good thing at that time of year. And perform three separate concerts in front of thousands of choir directors from across the country. So I'd like to say congratulations to sixth graders Mary Clayton and Sidney Rubenstein, seventh graders Priya Krishnaswamy and Lila Brown, and eighth graders Caitlin Berger, Emerson Hart, Adam Clayton, and Claire Jessen, and sixth grader Mary Clayton's older sister is in ninth grade, and she also was selected. So hats off to Ben. Certainly great news. I also wanted to report that I attended a very, very interesting conference about a week ago, and have a number of things to report from that. Conference was all focused on Silicon Valley innovation and trends in education. Ken Goldberg, who's a professor at University of California at Berkeley, he's a guy that merges robotics, art, imagination, and culture. He calls robots "the gateway drug of science and engineering." He talked a great deal about programming and repair jobs in the future that are going to be related to robots. It's extending from household things also with robotics having a very significant influence on the world of science and health and how communicable diseases are treated. Think of Ebola in recent months. When asked, "Where was the place that schools should get started with this?", he suggested to go to the first program. We have a first robotics at the high school now, and we really need to be looking at what we're doing with LEGO Robotics League. It's first, there's a whole succession of different things with that. One of the really interesting things that he said, that every single team that they have that he works with are cross-disciplinary team, and they're the norms in all the labs. And one of the fascinating things is the pairings that they have are frequently things that we wouldn't think of. So they pair a physics professor with a theater professor, with a chemical engineer, and so on. The head of MIT's Teacher Development also spoke with us. He leads all of their training for both math and science, trying to take students from being media consumers to media creators. He calls it "hard fun." He mentioned a good deal of stuff about multiplayer games with a quest are one of the things that they're looking into. One of the things that we think of, especially with many of our kids getting involved in Minecraft and other things, the learning possibilities of that look pretty limited to some parents. And the fact of the matter is, is that multiplayer games are really going to have the potential to revolutionize an awful lot of education. So for example, you're not just playing a game about the Civil War. You're actually a character in that Civil War, and the game has the opportunity to adjust to what you do, whether that's a virtual environment or not. The head of Intel's Education Division also spoke with us, talked about the changes in market and the incredible opportunities that that presents for students to be able to prototype and market test almost anything for under $1,000. They have 3D printers everywhere now. The high school just visited Lane Tech, and Lane Tech is the University of Chicago School. They have 18 3D printers there. The ability of the 3D printer, which is cool, is that you can try something out, you can print it, you can prototype what it works. Some of the adults that I work with, they work with naval suppliers. They're in the plastics business. Interestingly enough, when submarines and aircraft carriers go out, they don't bring wrenches and thousands and tens of thousands of parts with them anymore. They print the parts. It's very interesting. Also with the ability to crowdsource ideas, if a kid has an idea, they can actually put it out there and say, "Look, I'm looking for somebody to fund this." $500 to $1,000 is a very common thing. So they can have friends, family, or just about anybody anywhere can fund an idea for them. They view, Intel views this as a means of rebooting manufacturing in our country. There are lots and lots of examples, he said, of middle schools doing great work, being super engaging for kids, creating solutions. The difficulty it poses for educators is really an interesting thing. He said, "Look, you are not going to have really specific metrics for this. It is by nature very iterative. It's very open-ended, very flexible. Learn as you go. So you're not going to have a solution that's provided by Intel or Pearson Incorporated that provides so many solutions for us. A lot of what you're going to be doing is very, very experiential and county fair, science fair in nature." We also had a very interesting speaker, one perhaps the most popular was the guy from Apple, the person that heads up Apple's division, the entire education aspect of Apple Incorporated. And education is more to them than just a business at this point. They have actually integrated this into one of the core things that they want to be best in class at. They want to create ecosystems around devices. They really view the work of school as being creative and relevant and collaborative and challenging. The classroom of tomorrow, they see, is built around a personal learning environment. And one of the things they're quick to point out is that this kind of education, the technology-influenced education will never be any worse than it is today. So the ability to personalize things for students, to have a personal learning environment, a personal learning plan, is going to get better and better and better from this point forward. He also shared a couple of interesting stories. One of the first 40 guys that Steve Jobs hired, Jobs was notorious for coming in and asking them to do miracles. And this guy, one of his funny quotes was telling him, "Steve, I believe in miracles. I just don't believe in scheduling them." So really, really an interesting conference. One of the things that is most applicable for us is interwoven throughout the, through all the speakers, was this concept of a maker fair. Very few people, it's surprising, have heard of maker fairs. These are things where the garage tinkerer meets the science fair kid, meets the county fair kid. They come up with an idea and they trot it out, and they try stuff. One of the people I was talking to was really interested in maker fairs because it is super engaging, and very importantly, it's almost as engaging for girls as it is for boys in terms of their representation because these are not competitions. Robotics tends to be, have you ever seen one of the robotics competitions? It is really, it's like a WWF fight. I mean, it's really happening. Loud music, cheering, and all that other kind of stuff. Where maker fairs are exhibitions, and they have 40 percent of the students participating in the maker fairs are girls. One of the things that one of the guys I was talking to said, "It's a really great time to spend talking to people," was, "Look, what you're going to have to have is a huge space where you just have tables and stuff, and it ought to be like a giant barn." And that's not what school has looked like, but that's what cool looks like to kids. And so as we think about what we do with our facilities, what we do with our level of engagement for our students, that is a completely oddball kind of space that would be super appealing to kids and look like an absolute mess to adults. But that's what-
Much like our kids' bedrooms?
Yeah, right. If you like going in your kid's bedroom, right. Also, very interestingly, something I have not mentioned to anybody at this table, I don't believe, is I had a chance to sit next to the Superintendent of RYE, who we've used on any number of comparisons over the past year. He was Superintendent there for 16 years, and he was also the guy Superintendent of the first place that hired me. So, you know, he's got bad judgment all the way around. But we had a chance to talk old times a little bit there, but also how they put themselves on the map, what their improvement plan looked like. And very encouraging to hear a lot of the things that we're doing were the very things that they began doing as well. So we'll have a chance to talk more on that later on, I think. But in brief, talking to the guy that led a real emergence of that school district, they were about 500 students when he began there. They ended with about 1,000 students at the high school alone, and it was because they became a magnet for all kinds of families. So it was a terrific conference, really, really well worth the trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Simic. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who are yearning to address the board? Hearing none. We come to reports and discussions. Superintendent Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We do not have any reports or discussions for this month. We're going to have a pretty sizable array of them next month, I think.
The next item on the agenda is board committees. First is Board Education Committee, Leslie Fisher.
Thank you. And thank you, Mike, for reporting on that. It's always wonderful to hear, as I'm about to present the Education Committee minutes from that, how closely tied all of these innovations are. And I think those of us who are hearing this on a regular basis at the Education Committee can say it's wonderful to hear that you're seeing that on the forefront, too, and bringing more ideas back here. The Board Education Committee met this morning, so these notes are a little bit rough, and I will get them refined to Eileen by the end of the week. Okay, so first, we discussed the language acquisition block. So the assessment of the program in its new format, if you'll recall, we are now in the first year of a two-year pilot rollout, as we have the Inspiration Block at Cherokee with half of, roughly half of the children being in the language acquisition side, and the other half of the children being in the inquiry block. So as far as the language acquisition block goes, the assessment of the program in its new format will be based on the following criteria: reading and math growth based on NWEA map testing, language proficiency based on the Apple Test, and community and staff climate survey. These assessments will be administered in late spring in order to most accurately measure all above categories. It was discussed, it would be great if we could assess this now to plan sort of for next year right away, but in all fairness to the program, we felt that it was best to wait until the late spring to gather the data. Then we moved on to the World Language Committee update. And I reported on this last month when I talked about the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, but I'll go over this briefly. So Kelly Jackson is leading this committee, and it is evaluating our grades 2 through 4 program while we are maintaining the 5 through 8 program. One caveat to that is that added in fifth grade beginning next year will be an Advanced Mandarin section for those currently in the language acquisition block coming from Cherokee over to DPM. The Language Committee, World Language Committee, is considering the LASIC findings, dealing with the difficulties in staffing for certain languages, our declining enrollment, and low class sizes in some cases, basically asking the question, "Is this the best way? What is the goal for our World Language students?" Belief statements and goals have been articulated by the World Language Committee, and various plans will be presented at our February Board of Ed meeting by Kelly and perhaps other members of her committee, but certainly Kelly's at the helm there. Okay, we also had an update on PARC. So all teachers, not just classroom teachers, all teachers, support staff have gone through PARC Preparation, a program I believe that Lauren brought them. Some things are for sure. Yes, this test is going to take more time. We said perhaps an average of seven hours devoted to a PARC test, which is much more than perhaps the ISAT has taken up in the past. However, on the positive end, these tests, in a word, are better. They're more complex. They are being administered online, and the children are being acclimated to how they will be administered online. But we're not, insist, we're not really encouraging our teachers to spend a lot of time, let's say, teaching to the test. We're not super concerned with what the results of this test are because this is the first year it's being given to anyone. So everyone's sort of in the same boat. What we do want is we want our students comfortable and able to just expect what's going to be in front of them, but not spending a lot of time preparing for the test. And again, the more complex online and deeper thinking. So when I thought about this, I thought, okay, so these children are going to be spending more time taking the test. However, if that thinking time compared to perhaps some of how our time was spent in the past on ISATS, where we seem to certainly achieve very high, but maybe the rigor wasn't there, the rigor is here on this test, which was comforting. ELA adoption, that is English Language Arts. And again, I think this was something I did present last month after the Curriculum Coordinating Committee met, but this is in reference to the Lucy Cawkins program that will be implemented over the next couple of years. It is a writing/reading workshop program, K through 8. The writing portion will be rolled out in 2015, 2016. The reading portion will be rolled out in 2016, 2017. Preparations and PD are already beginning now to make sure that by the time it does roll out, even the writing portion, our teachers are prepared. And PD, teacher implementation, curriculum writing, all included here, all included here. And let's see. Some things that the workshop model does is it moves kids along based on their own continuum. When we talk about personalized plans, differentiation, this is right in line with that. So it was really nice to hear the connections being made to so much of the vision, mission process, and the things that we're trying to come out of that being implemented in this new program that we are adopting. And I believe that was it. Oh, except that I forgot the draft of the assessment report. The draft of the assessment report was really Lauren presenting to our committee, saying, "In December, at the Board of Ed meeting," so less than a month from now, Lauren will be presenting. As we do annually, we get an assessment report. In the past, that has really dealt with, "Here are your ISAT scores." Lauren will report what those ISAT scores are, not that they're that important as that test is now no longer being offered, but to give feedback certainly, tell us what the ISAT scores were, she will report on that. But she's also going to talk about a little bit how assessment reporting will be different moving forward, how we will be considering different kinds of assessments, even including some climate surveys, so that we'll be looking forward to hearing about that. And it was a very lengthy meeting. I really do want to thank everyone for hanging in there till 10:45 this morning. I think we met for two and a half hours, but very worthwhile. And special thank you to the administration, Lauren and Lori and Susan, who really informed us and prepared very well. And also to Sadar Krishnaswamy and Lorraine Greve, who I know every committee is different. They are such an active part of our committee and very grateful to them. And special guest, Mike Borkowski, doesn't even have to come, but he's there. So thank you very much. That concludes the Education Committee meeting report.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Board Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Shuler.
Before we get to that, I actually have a question.
Yes.
It sounds like we're considering which languages or how many languages to offer and which ones, whatever is decided, how is that coordinated with the high school, District 115, so that clearly they have to continue, right?
Thank you so much for saying that. Right, thank you so much for saying that. So basically, and you can chime in here if I'm incorrect here. So right now, we've got, in grade 2, you have the Latin exposure that all of the kids get. That's when language starts in our district right now. Grade 3, the students are offered sort of a six-to-nine-week testing of each of the four languages that is currently offered. That is continuing with Latin, French, Spanish, and Mandarin. By 4th grade, they have selected which of those they are going to continue to focus on. Okay, this is the current plan right now. And then as they enter into 5th grade, all of those languages are offered, okay? And it goes ahead, of course, to the high school. So as of right now, the only things we are really considering is 2 through 4, is this the best idea for our kids right now? Now, based on what comes out of that, are we going to have to look up? Of course. So, but the first steps are grades 2 through 4 right now. So that's the only change we're looking on in the immediate future. Does that answer it? Well, yes. Well, when you're talking about the language acquisition block, yes, that's a different thing. Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you, Leslie.
The Finance and Operations Committee has nothing new to report.
Thank you. The next committee report is the Policy Committee, Mike Borkowski.
My fellow Policy Committee member, Jeff Fulker, will give the report this month.
Thank you, Mike. The Board Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we do have another meeting scheduled for January 8th, which will be a combined joint policy meeting with District 115, as well as a separate District 67 meeting to discuss a five-year review of policies in accordance with press, as well as some press updates that we've recently received. And we also, just as a kind of a preview for the board, we do plan on beginning a discussion on development or understanding of our social media policies. Policy and practice surrounding social media has become an issue for a number of schools, both within our peer group as well as higher education, and we feel the need to get out in front of that and discuss what policies we have in place to address those potential issues. We realize this can be a thorny issue as it relates to staff and students, privacy, and where school jurisdiction begins and ends are tricky, but in talking with Mr. Simic, we feel now is the right time to at least begin those discussions. So we don't have anything this month, we shouldn't have anything next month, but starting in January, we will have press updates as well as hopefully further direction on a social media policy, or better understanding what that policy should look like. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fulker. Questions from any board members? Next up is the Compensation Committee, Rob Lemke.
The Compensation Committee has not met.
Thank you, Mr. Lemke. We now come to Liaison Reports, the first being the North Suburban Special Education District, Mr. Borkowski.
I'll make this report brief, as the board and admin are aware of all this information. I want to touch on a few highlights in order to keep the public informed. The NSSCD Governing Board met on November 12th. At the meeting, an alternative billing structure was discussed. Also, District 109 Deerfield has now publicly stated that they plan to file an intent to withdraw letter by December 31st of this year. District 112 Highland Park plans to rescind their current letter of withdrawal and will likely resubmit a new one by December 31st of this year, resetting their 18-month clock. Therefore, we do not need to take the formal consent/non-consent vote that I discussed with the board last month. There was a lot of discussion at the NSSCD Board meeting about these potential withdrawals and the impact they might have on the NSSCD. More work needs to be done by the NSSCD team to understand the potential impacts. The District 67 Board had a workshop with the administration to discuss these items in more detail last week. The administration is continuing to gather more data and analyze the proposed alternative billing structure before preparing a point of view on it. We'll hear more about that in the near future. The next NSSCD Board meeting will be on December 10th, 2014. That concludes the NSSCD Governing Board report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borkowski. Next up is the Illinois Association of School Boards, EDRED. There is no report this month. Next up is the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Leslie Fisher.
There is no report this month for the Curriculum Coordinating Committee. We will be meeting on December 4th here at West Campus, 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Next up is the Spirit of 67 Foundation, also Leslie Fisher.
Spirit of 67 Foundation met on November 11th, and the most important point covered was really the President's thank you to all of those who worked effortlessly to once again pull off a very successful luncheon on October 17th at, what's that place called? Thank you. At Exmoor, I was there, at Exmoor Country Club. And this year, they did raise over $50,000 between the luncheon, fantastic, right? Between the luncheon and the silent auction, they work so hard to do that, and we get to reap the benefits, our children get to reap the benefits throughout the grants that are given every year on behalf of the Spirit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Spirit of 67 does amazing work. Next up is APT, also Leslie Fisher, or is there another board member?
Yes. And continuing with our new tradition of rotating to the APT meeting, I would like to call on Beth Clemmison, who did attend.
I had the pleasure of attending the APT Exec Board meeting last November 12th. The meeting was kicked off by a report from Mr. Simic, who provided the information he shared with us in his Superintendent's Report this evening with the group there. And I think people were very excited about much of what he talked about on the importance of STEM education and innovation. We then heard from Susan Mills, the Director of Student Learning. She introduced herself to the team and talked about her background and some of the initiatives that she's been working on since being in the district since this summer. She also entertained questions from the parents in attendance, and one highlight was there were several parents who talked about the importance of making sure, as we are doing all of these innovative things, that we are still covering the basics. And there was a particular interest in grammar education, which we did discuss today in talking about the ELA curriculum at the Education Committee this morning. We then, I then gave an overview of the Education Committee and what our purpose is. I went through kind of the areas that we focus on in terms of vetting and discussing educational initiatives, providing feedback and insight and direction to the administration, and then obviously being a liaison back to the board as a whole. I talked about some of the topics that we've tackled and tried to get a few people to come this morning, but no one took me up on the offer.
It's too cold.
Yeah, well, that's probably true. The group then went into their individual committee reports, and while I won't go into the details on those since they are posted online, it was just great to hear about the many wonderful programs that are happening across all of our four schools, from a very new and exciting Veterans Day event to an upcoming family game night at DPM, a new event this year. I think we are just so fortunate to have these dedicated parents who devote so much of their time to enhance our kids' experience in our schools. And that concludes the APT report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clemmison. We now come to action items. First is approval of the 2014 tentative levy. Mr. Abus.
In your packet is a cover memo, and for people watching this on television or in the audience, I'm going to summarize the first two paragraphs of that because I think it really introduces the topic well. Annually, the Board of Education is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy. A tax levy is a request for property taxes to fund the school year that starts the following July. While the Board can levy or ask for any amount it desires, the amount of revenue actually received is limited by a formula contained in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. There are two components to the formula. One is the December year-over-year Consumer Price Index number that determines the aggregate allowable increase in property taxes on existing construction. That number is already known and is 1.5 percent. The second component is the value of new construction within the district. In 2013, the new construction figure was 6.6 million. While actual 2014 new construction will not be known until next spring, it is currently estimated to be 9 million. That would generate a revenue increase excluding bond and interest of 1.91 percent. Now, if the district's levy is equal or greater than what that formula produces, the district will receive what the formula generates. So if the county projections are right, the formula would produce a 1.9 percent increase. The Board could ask for a 50 percent increase or a 75 percent increase. That won't matter. The formula- That won't matter, the formula will bring it back down. However, if the Board requests an amount that is lower than what the formula produces, we only receive what's asked for. And that's significant, because the way the formula works is what we get every year is based on what we received the prior year. So not accessing all of the available dollars has an impact not only in the upcoming year, but for every future year as well. Also in your packet is a sheet that looks very much like the one that's up on the board, and I'd like to point out a couple of things. This is showing a growth in property values of 2.5%. That's interesting, because the last several years, that's been a negative number in the 5% to 6% a year range. So hopefully, we've seen a bottoming out of property values and maybe a slight rebound here. Again, we're looking, and this comes from the county, a projected growth in new construction of $9 million. Last year, that number was 6 million. So how that works into the formula, this is the amount of money we received last year. In the formula, you back out the money that goes to bond and interest or debt. That's because when investors buy bonds and invest in the school district, they want assurance that they're going to be paid back. So the authors of the property tax cap back in the early 90s built in a component to exclude that. That is levied for by the county. So that means last year, we received $30.5 million. And under the formula, that can increase in the aggregate by 1.5% or go up to $30.9 million. That's actually an increase of $457,000. Now, what's important in here, I said that this amount can increase in the aggregate by 1.5%. And this is always a confusing part of the tax cap formula. If the aid of you represented all the homes in Lake Forest, in the aggregate, the amount of money increased to the taxing bodies, or the school district in this case, would be a growth of 1.5%. However, individually, the amount you pay in taxes can go up or down based on what happens with the assessment of your individual house. So people always get confused by that number, especially if they've seen the value of their house go up and their neighbors have gone down, they see a disproportionate allocation The next sheet in your packet.
Hey, Alan.
Yes.
Quick question. New construction, is that commercial as well as residential?
Yes, it is.
And in Lake County, all property is assessed at 33 1/3 of projected market value on Lake Cook, which has a varying schedule. Because we're working off of projections and we're estimating a 1.91% increase, we typically then would recommend a levy that's slightly higher than that to capture any variances in the new construction. That also gives us some flexibility as we go to build next year's budget and where we end up allocating funds among the individual funds, while the aggregate number wouldn't increase more. Because again, if we're right in what the county's projecting, this number would get knocked down to the number that I showed on the first page. But our recommendation typically is always slightly above that amount. Why is accessing the inflationary increase of the formula important? Well, I'll give three reasons. The first one is I think it's important to recognize that the authors of the Property Tax Extension Act recognize that in providing a consistent level of service, there tends to be an inflationary trend. I don't think their intent was to erode that level of service that entities provide. The second one, as I stated earlier, is that each year's revenue is based on the prior year revenue. So a decision not to access that is a multi-year decision, not a single-year decision. But also, and I'm going to put up a sheet to show you, we're in a period where the inflationary increase not only addresses increases in expenses, but reductions in other revenues that the district receives. I think that's about as good as it's going to get, so I'll try and walk through this. This is a graph of interest earnings and state revenues for the district since 2007 through 2014. This line right here is representative of interest earnings in the district. So you can see in 2007, it was slightly below $800,000. And in 2014, we're below $100,000. This line here represents special ed funding that comes from the state. You can see it's gone up and down. Some of this is driven by the number of special education students in the district, some of it's driven by prorations from the state or reimbursement levels. This number here represents our general state aid from the district. Again, this is influenced by the amount of kids enrolled in the district, but also by prorations going on at the state level. Right now, we receive 85% of what the formula would say that we're entitled to receive. Several of these numbers are combined accounts, and there was a change in the accounting manual in 2009, so they may or may not be representative of the figures prior to that. This number here would represent early childhood, reading improvement, and school safety. And as you can see, that's actually gone away completely as of 2011. There is a number down here, believe it or not, on the bottom line of about $4,000. That's the only revenue line here that's actually increased. So if you were to add these up, if you went back to 2007 and totaled up the dollar amounts here, it adds up to about $2.7... $2.7 million. In 2008, that numbered, I'm sorry, $2.2 million. In 2008, it went to 2.3. In 2009, 1.8. 2010, 1.6. 2011, 1.4. 2012, 1.3. 2013, 1.3. 2014, 1.2. So from 2007 to 2014, we're down $1 million a year in these combined revenue sources. Obviously, a big chunk of that is coming right here in the drop of interest rates. Back in '07, we were probably looking at, I don't know, 5% a year, 5% to 6% in interest earnings, and now we're well below 1%.
Should've walked 10 yards more.
Should've, should've, could've, would've. So again, in your packet tonight, this is the recommended tentative levy, and I say tentative, because under the law, we're required to pass a tentative levy at least 20 days prior to the adoption of a final levy. By adopting a tentative levy tonight and a final levy on December 15th will satisfy the requirements of the law. Any questions?
It's not a question, I just want to really thank you and Jen and Lauren and Lori. I, as you know, am sort of philosophically opposed to asking for the max tax every year just because, even understanding that it has impacts beyond that. This year, and you didn't mention this tonight, but I think you mentioned it last month, was very different, where you and the administration came to us and showed exactly how we're going to spend this money, why we need this money to achieve the vision that we set out last year. And you talked about educational initiatives and capital improvement plans and life safety. And for me, you really showed, we need this money if we want to move towards that vision that we laid out. So I support this and thank you for the showing that we really truly do need this money to achieve it.
Alan, thank you for that report. Are there other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much, Alan. Could I have a motion to approve the tentative levy for District 67 Board of Education as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of human resources items. These include hirings, resignations, terminations, family and medical leave, change in status. These may have been discussed in closed session. Other questions or comments from board members or the superintendent? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. This includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, minutes of a regular board meeting, minutes of an executive session, minutes of a joint board workshop, and disposal of audio recordings. Are there any items that a board member would like removed from the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the item agenda, excuse me, next item on the agenda are FOIA requests from the University of, excuse me, from Illinois Education Association, the Union Election Integrity Unit, and Laura Rukavina, resident of Lake Forest. Announcements, Monday, November 24th, our conferences from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Tuesday, November 25th, conferences, no student attendance. November 26th to 28th is Thanksgiving break. Monday, December 15th is the next meeting of the Board of Education, 7:00 PM, right here. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned.